All right, good evening. It is about 7:01. I'd like to call to order this workshop and special business meeting of the New Market School Board. Before we begin, I'd like to start this meeting as we do all others with the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some presentations tonight, a couple of them, one on competency-based education from the junior, senior high school, and another one from Amy Rossi, the district data manager, delving more deeply into academic performance. But I'd like to amend the agenda if I could from the board. Chris Hawkins, the school district moderator, is here to talk about the deliberative session. And Chris, if you'd like to proceed and make your presentation, please feel free to come to the mic.
Sure. This was a presentation as my annual visit to remind the board that it's really helpful to me to have your script for deliberative session.
Okay.
I think it's extremely helpful, my experience, if questions come up to know who to turn to to answer those questions. So each warrant article, I think it's helpful for the board to decide who's going to move it, who's going to second it. The statute's been amended so that the identity of the person who makes the motion and seconds the motion needs to be clearly identified on the record now.
Okay.
Another thing that came up, we did moderate the training last Saturday, but I think it's a darn good idea, I don't know why I didn't think of it sooner, is that...
It's on this chair.
Right.
Right.
Amendment to the warrant article from the floor, that the school board...
Notice a meeting for the, to immediately follow the deliberative session to decide whether or not you want to change your recommendation based on the amendments that may come up. So you would just notice a meeting.
Okay.
You're all there.
Right.
And then...
Just in case.
Just in case you need to.
Okay.
And then if nothing happens, you can say, open the meeting and close the meeting.
And you'll take care of that for us, correct?
It sounds like a pretty...
Thank you.
Sounds like a pretty good idea. I'm going to bring the same idea to the town council. I don't know, I didn't think of it sooner. It sounds like a darn good idea. So that's really all. The basic rules haven't changed or anything.
And I will get you all the information prior to, so we're prepared.
Yeah, I think it's real helpful. And if there's anything that you anticipate being unusually, I'd just like to know in advance so that I know when to duck and things like that.
Okay.
So I also appeared today before the House Election Committee. They have a bill considering about the moderator's authority to postpone elections. So that issue is still, still ongoing. So I told them, I think we have the authority and to the extent they think we don't, maybe they should give it to us. For whatever that's worth. So that's it.
Well, thank you very much, Chris, and we will get these details to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, have a good night.
So we'll move on to the competency-based education presentation from New Market Junior/Senior High School. And Principal Mazzoni, if you would introduce the people that we have with us who are going to be presenting to us, I would appreciate it very much.
So with us, we have middle school social studies, Mr. Mark Levitt, and middle and high school Spanish, Ms. Erin Copeland.
Hello.
And so just a little bit of background, obviously, we try to do biannual updates. So we've sort of delved into the competency-based education realm over the course of the last year and a half. So we're here tonight to provide an update of the work that's been done since, I think, we were here last in June. And so since June, this is about a good time to do some of that and talk about what's next for us. So just to review.
Be aware that the microphone is needed. If you're standing here, you can use your one. If you're in there, please take it.
Thanks.
Just take that one right off the...
We'll stay at the mic because they're going to be the show eventually.
Okay.
So just to sort of reiterate for folks, we talk about competency-based education. It's really looking at what kids know and are able to do, basically working from a first grab set of standards and then they vary. We talked about this last year, from curriculum area to curriculum area, but there's a nice acronym that sort of goes along with it. If you aren't able to see it on the... To create a culture of student-driven learning based on the mastery of knowledge and skills, to build skills that emphasize college and career readiness, engage and empower all stakeholders through transparency and consistency. And then as a committee, our job is to develop a North Star. What is the reason? Why is this right for kids and why is this right for our kids in New Market? Let you read that out here. Have your own pace. So this is not new. This is the North Star you've seen before and maybe even the folks in the home and in the audience. The common vocabulary that we reviewed the first couple of times we were here, it's important, we'll start every presentation off just as we do with our full faculty and when we start talking to students and parents, the same kind of thing. So we really start to understand these common terms and phraseology that goes with it. You're probably hearing your students, if you have students in the school coming home and using terms like formatives and summatives now. That's been sort of the tip of the spear. When we last met, we also talked about the skills in which industrial leaders look for in terms of kids leaving high school and what they're prepared for. And we can see the differences between 2015 and 2020. Tonight, we're going to talk specifically about our habits of work rubric and sort of what that means. Historically in education, things like passing work in on time, being productive members of the classroom, how we work together in a group, sort of those, what some people would call playing school, the unwritten rules of school and sort of how to quantify those. Tonight, we're going to talk a lot about how we're going to quantify those and evaluate some of those pieces. Right now, on the common report cards at the junior, senior high school, there's a conduct and effort grade. Our movement here with the work habits rubric is to actually quantify that. We get one through five right now. And it's never really been clear for folks. We get a lot of questions, oh, what does a one mean and what does a five mean? So we're going to talk a little bit about how we're going to quantify some of those expectations as they relate to these 21st century skills and why it's important, but also why it doesn't belong in how we report progress. So historically, you might have had a student who received a grade of an A or B, and in that, it may have been a combination of test grades and quiz grades, or now we would say formative and summative. But what it also allowed for was what, when I was a teacher, we called the magic eraser. So if Mark maybe struggled a little bit, but was a really hard worker, which is a really important skill, was good at coordinating with others, had good emotional intelligence, judgment, decision-making, that should be quantified somewhere. But it doesn't necessarily belong in reporting what a child knows and is able to do. And so we're really working on teasing those pieces out, but not lessening the importance of them. It's really important to us that those skills are somewhere and somewhere with some esteem. So we'll talk about that in a little bit. Before we dive into that specific piece, Erin and Mark are going to talk a little bit about our CBE Masters Program right now. We have a core board of teachers and they're going to take it from here. So we've, we were invited to join a brand-new program from a partnership through Southern New Hampshire University and Two Revolutions. And the 10 of us will be one of the very first groups of teachers that will receive a master's degree in competency-based education alone. So it's a pretty new program. So what we're looking at is basically, within 18 months, we should be graduated, fully immersed in CBE, understand it, live it, breathe it, everything. And that way, we can come back and we can help the district move itself forward with that built-in kind of knowledge-based working in amongst the students. A lot of our projects that we will be asked to complete, there'll be individual projects that we identify through our own little kind of, you know, this is what I want to focus on, this is one of my weaknesses. So that'll be an individual one. But we'll also work on a group project, and those are the really interesting ones because that's going to help the CBE committee move further. And so we'll identify things within the district that we can change, that we want to change, and then see if we can come up with solutions for that and make competency-based education work for New Market. It's, it's a pretty daunting task. We just finished the first part of it and it's like, whoa. And then we get introduced to our new, you know, courses just this weekend.
This weekend.
And it was like, wow, this is real. And it makes you really reflect. I mean, you're really, really thinking about your own teaching now. But what's really nice about this program through Inspired Ed is that a lot of it is online. But we are being asked to conduct this whole program through the lens of competency-based education. It's not your traditional college program. So it's an experience in itself. So we're going to learn as we roll right through it, which is kind of nice. We did put in a couple of links there if you needed to know more about the, like, Two Revolutions. This is the organization where they were designed to help schools and communities gather the information, put the information together, try to roll it out. So there's a link to them. The Inspired Ed program, that's what we're involved in, enrolled in, that's from Two Revolutions. They're the ones really driving the content, but Southern New Hampshire University, they're kind of, they're the partner that we have to go through to get this program rolling and get the scores and the grades. So I don't know if there's another slide to that. No, that should be it. So we're up to...
I just add one thing, Mark, which is that as a part of this cohort, we also get a district coach who'll be working with the initiative team as well as supporting teachers in their practice and making visits to the district over the next couple of years.
Exactly. And I think one of the things we identified at an administrative level as well, one, the program where you, problems of practice, it's real and it's right there and you can put them to use. I know that my CAGS program was similar to that in that you're able to take what you're working on and apply it the next day, either in your classroom or in your school. The other piece that we noticed, historically, the model in schools has been to have, whether it's a movement or an idea or an initiative, and work on it and provide PD after you've decided what it's going to be. We sort of flipped that script and it was important to us to look differently and say, we need to flood people with professional development prior to undertaking anything. We need to know what we're doing before we're doing it. And that's, that's a departure from the way a lot of schools operate. And I'm particularly proud of this group and that work, I think. Flooding people with PD so they're prepared to do it is much better than the old model of doing it and then figuring out how to do it when you're doing it. So this is really neat. So one thing we talked about, and Erin's going to take this piece on, is really teasing out between the habits of work and what's going to make us successful and productive citizens and how that, not only is it really important, but how it's very different and very separate from traditional grading practices. Are you able to see this all right?
No, but you're going to send it to us anyway, so we're all right.
Yes. So...
So Mark and I are also on that CBE committee that he mentioned before. And what we've been working on for the last few months is developing this work habits rubric. And I feel like it's almost there, almost. Work, we have a couple of things that we're trying to figure out. Is the wording right? We're not really sure. And a couple of months ago, we asked our staff to, to try a draft and see how it actually works in their classrooms. And so what I have tonight is, I also have some examples of student work that I'll talk about in just a minute. And I got some feedback from them, which was really nice as well. But part of the problem that we're trying to work through is our wording and how many columns we should have. And it was hard for you guys to read, but it does says, over here on the left, it says distinguished or proficient. Or maybe we should word it proficient with distinction. And then is it proficient or progressing, basic or non-met? So we're trying to figure out kind of what that language should look like. And we're looking for feedback from students and then we'll look for feedback from other places as well to try to figure that out.
There are models that use numbers, one through four.
Do you see this? This is between you and the students?
Yeah.
This isn't, not everybody sees it, so it's private.
Yes. Yep. They would self-assess their work habits. Yep. That's how I've done it, self-assessment.
And you have examples of that, which we'll get to.
Yeah.
The other piece is, there may be different types of rubrics. So this particular one is the work habits. You might have a group work rubric. There may be a rubric for, I'm trying to think besides group work or some of the other ones. Presentation skills is another one that possibly might have been. So it's an opportunity for students to self-assess, but it's also an opportunity for teachers to assess sort of and look at the two pieces and say, are we in the same room here on this? Are we seeing this the same way?
Mark, can you explain some of my findings?
All right.
So what I did was I gave this to 53 students in Spanish one. And in Spanish one, I have kids that are freshmen all the way up to seniors, so we have ages 14 through 18. And I organized my, my feedback in a very traditional competency-based manner. We have warm and cool feedback. So warm feedback would be kind of like the pros, positive feedback. And the cool would be more of the critical feedback, I guess you could say. So when I gave this to them, I kind of explained the language to them. Do you want to hand these?
Sure.
These are random samples of what, how kids assess themselves on the rubric that we're currently developing. So this isn't the final product. It's just a draft. So I gave this to students and I went through the language with them to make sure that they understood how they were going to self-assess. And after they filled it out, I kind of did a poll and we kind of talked as a class and I asked for some feedback. And some of them were pretty quiet, but there were a few that wanted to share their thoughts. Overall, the language was pretty comprehensible. They didn't ask questions about what something meant necessarily. So that was pretty good. And I think it's part of what we talked about earlier, where they're getting used to seeing the words formative and summative. So they now know what that means. They liked the amount of performance columns, most of them. If you look in the cool feedback, some of them do wish that there was an additional column between proficient with distinction and proficient. Because a lot of them, not a lot, a few of them said that, well, if I don't bring my stuff to class once, then I'm automatically, I'm not proficient with distinction anymore. Now I'm just proficient. And so that was hard. And so now we have to kind of look at, is perfection, is perfection what we want? Is that our standard? So that's something that we have to think about too. And it was great to hear that from them as well. They self-assessed in the way that I would assess them. I would say like, this is a very vague number, but 90%-ish, I would probably grade them the same way. There were only a few where I was like, well, maybe I would, maybe I would grade them better than they graded themselves or maybe they weren't feeling totally honest with themselves. I'm not sure. But most of the time, it was pretty, pretty light.
They're pretty spot-on with their own abilities and, you know, capabilities. And you do find a few minority groups, you know, small groups of kids who they will over-assess themselves. Or they will, and this is a surprising one, they'll under-assess themselves. It's like, whoa. Of course, they feel good when you say, you know, this is much better than you thought. They're like, really? So they love that part. But it is interesting, you know, especially at the middle school level. As you had the high school kids, and I was speaking with our language arts teacher for the seventh graders and she relayed a story about, you know, one of the kids was saying, yeah, I do this. It's perfect. It's all the time. And she says, okay, well, what about this instance? Oh, yeah, maybe not. So a lot of the times, we, you know, we have to have that conversation to clear the air with some of the kids. So it's, it's interesting. It's a good conversation piece for the students.
I have an advantage also in the sense that I do teach high school and middle school. So I have sixth grade all the way up to people, to 18-year-old students. So my next step, what I would like to do is take this exact rubric, which, like I said, is a draft, and to give it to the sixth graders and to see how that works and if they understand the language and kind of see the differences. Because I have an advantage to be able to see, to see that, to compare them.
And one of the drivers, what's nice about this is traditionally it was, you hand it to me, I report back to you how it went. You're really allowing teachers to move to a more positive facilitational education instead of reporting on your progress. And it's sort of done in isolation. So it really does sort of mirror in that, we're going to move from the sage on the stage to the guide on the side. And that, that's pretty exciting. That's really exciting for kids. And we're letting our fast runners run.
Student ownership too, in the process.
So we got really excited when we were developing this rubric and we thought we were almost there, which I think we are, but it still, it still reminds us that this is a process and there's a lot to think about. Is, is four columns too many? Is it not enough? What is the right amount? So there's, it's always going to be something that we have to think really hard about before we come up with a final decision. Which is why it takes a lot of, a lot of us and a lot of time to develop this and to get it just right.
And this process, the, the piece of the work habits rubric also is a really good time. And we've talked about involving parents and kids and all of the stakeholders in the discussion. We now have tangible questions to ask. So rather than start to try a conversation with really nothing to anchor us, we now have a starting point to start. It's, it's a small step towards what it'll eventually be over the course of seven or eight years, the final destination. So this one is, Erin, this is one of your samples, which I believe you have...
Yeah, someone, someone has this one. This is one of the students who would have liked to have a column between proficient and proficient with distinction. Always wanted to have something in the middle, which I understand too.
I love that because they're just, that perfection.
Right.
That's perfection, right?
They're parsing it out. They're like, yeah, I see this and this, but is there, yeah, it is good to see.
Because they're saying, listen, I'm, I'm really good, but I'm not perfect. And do we want to do ours? I think maybe not.
That's our question. So we're trying to figure out, I guess.
I would say striving towards perfection is a great goal, but knowing that the work getting there is just as important. There's another one.
Yeah. These are just kind of a little all over the board here, some proficient, some basic.
But very honest.
Very honest. Yeah.
Some of the comments coming out of, again, the seventh grade classroom, the kid just openly, yeah, I don't do this. I don't, I will not do that.
Yeah.
And they honestly did it.
That was the most impressive to me, was reading through those and being like, yeah, I would, I would assess you there as well, but I'm glad, I'm glad that you realized that too. It's good stuff.
And as we, if we get to the realm of student-led conferences, now...
Our fourth grade teachers did student-led conferences this year. And I think, you know, for that group of students, as they approached this in fifth grade and sixth grade and as they moved through middle and into high school, I was going to go to exactly the same place, right? They're, they're better understanding themselves as learners and better able to evaluate their strengths and weaknesses, which is the work of life.
And if my mom comes in, I'm explaining to her my progress. I'm not relying on the adult to do it. But they'll may facilitate that conversation, but it's my words. Sometimes, Mom, I'm not always on time to class. I need to be honest about that.
And again, student ownership. A mom or a dad can't go in there and say, why did you do this?
Exactly. Yeah, these are your child's own words.
Yep. This is ownership. And I like, I like that.
It's pretty exciting.
To weave it all in, we, for part of our first section of our course, our, our work that we had to produce was self-reflection. Everything was self-reflection. And so we're seeing this tie-in. And I think that's pretty awesome because our course is a CBE modeled course. And it's all about self-reflection. That's what everything is.
It makes you really think. Because, you know, you get rolling and you forget, but if you're forced to stop, think, reflect, you're like, oh, I did do that. I could do that better.
And to my as a learner and how do I, how do I learn and what do I look like and how? It's, it's been useful so far. Learned a lot about myself.
And you've probably seen it, but it's really exciting to see teachers excited. Because while teachers are excited, they get more excited when they're doing it. We're all like, kind of giggling now.
We love when these presentations come because it's good to see, you know, I did not know until tonight that there were 10 people in this program and it excites me very much that you guys are doing it. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And that was part of the requirement from the two organizations that are presenting it. They, they would not take standalone individuals. You'd have to come as a group because they want to help those districts and affect that change that way. That's just one more I could probably throw. Did you have questions on specific student work?
Well, I actually have questions. How did they, did they pick certain districts or did, is every district in New Hampshire going?
No, they, they opened it up. It was an open invitation to districts that could field enough people for that cohort.
That says a lot about us too as a team.
Yeah. And we've got, what, either 72 or 80 in the entire class.
I think it's like somewhere between there. I think it's almost 80 people.
Yeah. We're the smallest district in that cohort, right? I believe we are.
I think we are.
Manchester and Exeter, so some pretty large communities. Yeah.
Which is so impressive, 10 people from a small district, a lot. I mean, we still feel like a pretty big group when we were at the orientation with all the other districts.
As a board member, it makes me happy to see employees willing to give their time back to the district and back to this, to us. That means a lot to us, I think.
So we have a bit of a to-do list for ourselves. As you saw, we're still working through the finalization and adoption of the work habits rubric. And there's still work to be done there. Again, columns, wording, are we involving stakeholders in those discussions? We now have something tangible to start those discussions, but continuing to qualify those assessments, which develop that scale and to make sure that our assessments are aligned with the competencies and skills that we're asking kids to demonstrate for us. We'll be getting scheduled meetings in March. March is a great month because weather's never an issue. To start scheduling meetings for students, staff and parents. Again, this was the first time we involved students in this, in this process, so we want to get it out to the larger student body. We've done it on a pilot scale, so that's pretty exciting. And, and the faculty was amazing. We, what did we do? Anyone who would give it a try, we bought three Irving Gas Cards. We put names in it and had, so it was overwhelming. Like, I don't, I think people would have done it anyway, but it just made it a little bit more fun.
Yeah.
Geez, we had a really good cross-section of middle and high school, different curriculum areas that really gave a shot. So that was really neat to watch.
That's how we got our feedback in order to, to work on that work habits rubric, is we worked in small groups and everyone got to talk about it and we made this giant list. And then that helped us drive the rubric that you're looking at right now, which was pretty awesome.
So, and that's a great point too, Erin. There's a ton of behind-the-scenes work that they're doing that makes this look really nice. But there's a ton of work being done on a part of teachers, which is just great to watch.
On your time.
On their time. Yeah, oh, yeah. Let me schedule some around our PD days, but for the most part, it's absolutely. To focus our PD, there's another summer institute coming this summer. How many do we have so far, Meredith? So that's another 22 outside of this 11. I think mostly outside of the 11 and then the cohort. So that's another sort of, the ripple has expanded, which is great for our district. So we'll work on our building and district goals. And then Mr. Cooney's going to help. He's started to migrate a lot of these resources onto our website, so that's pretty exciting. It is.
And parents won't even realize what's happening until they start going to these parent meetings. And then, then again, why does Johnny have this? Well, let me show you the rubric.
And I do know from a certain seventh grader who might be in one of your classes, she has mentioned certain assessments, summative assessments. So the, the language is coming home.
That's great. And we are watching. A lot of districts are in different places and you could very easily say, well, we're, we're behind. We're not. We're being very calculated because we're also seeing a lot of the roadblocks people are running into and trying to plan ahead of those. It won't always be perfect, but we've had a real opportunity. In fact, the town that I live in is having the same discussion with their board right now. They're a few years ahead of where we are, but they're finding some things that they're trying to work through as well. And that's been interesting to hear from a parent perspective. They try to ask, what do you think? Are you sure you want to hear what I think? Because I'm an educator. And so we, we have some pretty spirited discussions, but it's helped us. And I'll bring those questions back that are on, you know, I'm getting as a parent, I'm bringing it back to the committee and saying, let's anticipate that this could be a question. So it's been really fun to do.
I think also giving our teachers the opportunity to be part of a group of 70, with 70 other educators from around the state who are grappling with the same thing, where you may be the only Spanish teacher in our district doing this work, right?
Yeah, I know.
You now have the opportunity to potentially access a larger network of people. And that, again, for a small place is really beneficial.
And doesn't, and prevents people from having to reinvent the wheel. You know, the wheel is being developed in the class.
Yeah.
You can take this stuff, apply it back to the community and then to the, to the district as a whole. So it's, it's a great benefit.
Any, any questions? You want to know more about?
I, I get excited every time you come in because sometimes I get frustrated, you know, watching some of this develop and, and I, I worry, people getting lost in the mix. But when you come here and I, I see the work that you're doing, I, it gets me excited again. And so it's good that you come back every...
That is probably one of the biggest problems with a lot of rollouts is that communication piece.
Yeah.
If you talk to people in districts that are having questions and having difficulty and they'll come right back to that saying, where was the communication piece? And that's why we think it's super important to make sure that every step of the way it comes out. So it's not a surprise. And it shouldn't be a surprise. So that's, that's good that, you know, taking advantage of that. Thank you for, again, for taking all the time and the compressed 18-month schedule. Thank you for, again, for taking all the time and the compressed eighteen-month schedule, which is challenging.
Yeah, I just realized that. Yeah. Well, thanks.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Would you like these back?
Erin and-
Sure, yes.
Marc, by the way, are both having the teacher leaders requests, he's eighteen, he'll be coming in.
Thank you very much.
That, that collaboration is also really important.
And it, it's really good for us to talk about, when we talk about the CBA and, and why we have to reward our teachers. You have two people sitting here who are willing, I mean, they're getting an education, guess what? They're marketable. They're meeting other people, they're meeting other communities, they're showing what we have, people might want that. We need to keep our people here and part of that is by offering them more money and by offering them steps in an education like this, something to make them wanna stay with us, besides this beautiful board that you all love. Right, kids?
Thank you guys very much.
Bye.
We'll just take a few minutes. Amy, take your time to get set up and then whenever you're ready, we can proceed.
No, I haven't been on the calendar.
We'll deal with it, we have time.
Thursday, I'm never on it. Like Thursday's my worst day. And I forgot the calendar that I printed out.
Oh, it's his?
Do you have that?
No, I was gonna use my iPad.
We can get Meredith to print it out.
Oh my goodness.
Make sure I'm even on.
Oh no, let me just plug this one.
You know what, I may not, I think I can. Yes, I am.
I, I need to get this on my phone. I don't want to, but I will.
It's on my phone too.
I've never had to do it, for six years I've done this. This one you did? How's one, she, this one seems smaller than I remembered. That's okay.
I can show you what I did.
Is this you?
That bullet.
Okay.
Thank you guys very much. You too.
There we go.
Yeah, just waiting for the, from. I brought my own, I maybe I'll just sign in with my own.
Why are you representing?
Let's try this one. Maybe not, of course this one's not gonna use, I'll have to come over here. I do.
I think we can. Let me see. Meredith, would you like to give us a boiler update while we are waiting?
Thank you.
The pressure off of me.
Do you still have a temporary boiler? It is working better than it was last week. I, you know, I can't guarantee that it may not have additional challenges. One of our, one of our challenges is that we have a large building, a lot of square footage to heat and finding temporary boilers that can cover that space is difficult. So there aren't other temporary boilers available to us. So our boiler repair contractor, they actually work through Ekman, our construction equipment firm, but has been responsive, but it's an older boiler. It's temporary, but it's older. So since we've not been able to locate other temporary boilers, our focus really has been on trying to expedite installation of the permanent boilers and speed up that timeline. Through our conversations with Ekman, our feeling right now is that they should be able to be online in three weeks or so. We have also plans, should we have a situation again where we need to cancel the junior senior high because we can't provide heat, school, at the elementary school could continue because we have some alternative meal, backup meal plans in place so that we could continue to supply that.
So that's why the elementary school was canceled, because they couldn't cook.
That's correct. That's correct. Right now, our junior senior high kitchen is preparing food for the elementary school. In order to prepare food, you have to have hot water. You can't have hot water if you don't have heat. And unfortunately, we also had an issue last week where our alarm notifications for the boiler system were also not working. So we now have redundancy in that system, both cellular and cable-based. And hopefully, if we do have a situation again, which, which could happen, I hope that it won't, knock on all the wood you can find. Hopefully it won't, but if it does, we should know at an earlier hour. Again, our challenge last time was that we weren't able to get it refired. We knew that it was going to need repairs, that it was going to take some time to get the part on-site to make that replacement and we had forecasts for temperatures in the s- in the single digits, so.
That was the coldest day in a while.
And the thing is, it's such an old building, that even if you, we had a new boiler, if it shuts down, it's gonna take a while to heat that building up, which is why we've looked for multiple boilers in the new, the new bill.
That's correct. So our new boilers, there are, there are actually three boilers, so you have redundancy in the new system. And again, our hope is those will be online in three weeks, but it's, it's part of the challenge really that this community has been living with for a decade. You know, heat has been a challenge at the junior senior high for some time and hopefully that, that pain is almost behind, behind you.
Meredith, I just wanted to thank you and Greg and the administrative teams in both schools for responding as promptly as you did that morning to, you know, cause we had some students that were already en route to school and addressing those things, teachers, everything expeditiously. I appreciate that very much, so thank you.
And I, and this is part of what happens when you do an addition renovation. We knew these were gonna happen. We knew they were gonna be hiccups. They are, they stink. You know, it's, it's, it's hard for people who work to find the daycare and people to take care of it. If we all stick together, just be patient, we're gonna get through this. The goal is, is there. We can see it. There's a light.
Yeah, I can add two pieces to that. One, we'll be seeing some light next week at the elementary school with the opening of our elementary gymnasium. So that's exciting and I know, we aren't inviting the general public to come in for that, but Channel thirteen is gonna come and film that, so people will be able to see on TV until they get their own chance to visit the new gym, what's happening there and what that space looks like. But that's one of the really exciting things on the horizon. I'll also add that because of the Boiler Day and because we also learned from the town last week that they're going to hold elections here at the Town Hall, that we will have a recommendation to you in February about potentially postponing our March workshop day to the end of the school year and making that a regular instructional day for students, rather than having students here an additional day in June. It's still very early in our winter season.
Right.
We have a couple more snow months potentially ahead of us.
And it's gonna be really cold Monday and Tuesday.
Yes.
Well, fortunately, Monday's a holiday, so that gives us a reprieve.
And now, here's Amy.
Can I add one thing to the new gym at the-
Please do.
The elementary school.
Mini mules.
There is a fabulous celebration planned. Good old Nancy Miller plants such awesome things.
We have, we have.
It just sounds great.
I might need to get some mule garb to be properly clad for the day. Mini mule garb.
The G A has mini mule shirts on sale at the school store.
I might have to pick one up.
I'm just gonna move this cause I realize that those folks over there will not be able to see if I live there, so don't mind if I trip on my way up.
Please don't.
Thanks for having me here again.
Thank you.
Last time I was here, we looked at some data, basically from third grade on through seniors, I think. We actually looked at the, well, eleventh graders, I guess, SATs. And people were asking some questions and I said, you know, these are, are not things that are easy to answer just off the cuff, that we really need to look more deeply into the data and offered to come back, so here I am. And as you can see, it started with the three Ds, data conversations, digging deeper and driving instruction. So we're gonna go, we're gonna go through this process together. And we, I might have to shorten some things up because as you, you know, might imagine, these are pretty complex things to be looking at and it's, when we have the, all the teachers there, they can go through their experiences, so we'll go through what we can go through. And I had some markers. And I can't see right with that. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, just took the wrong pocket. Okay, here we go. So most of this data's gonna look very familiar to you.
Right.
It's the same data that I showed you last time I was here. And this time, we're gonna talk a little more about it as we go through it and then we'll get into digging into it. So what I'd like you to do and, and feel free, anywhere here, if you have a comment that you'd like to give us about what this data is saying to you or something that you notice about it, please go ahead and let me know and I'm gonna just jot down some ideas that you give me. So what do you see?
So I see six years of data and-
Six years of data? Thank you.
A varying, it's not a linear curve here. Up, this, this, this back and forth in terms of percentages.
Okay, good.
I wonder what happened in sixth and seventh grade with the math scores.
Just ask what, what we take from this, what it means, where do we go from here?
Okay, and, and that's really where we're going to be going? And I'm gonna put that up here, but that, that is exactly what we're going to be doing.
I think that's what we were all left with last time too.
I guess the total driving instruction piece of things. You know, delving into the data to determine what implication that has on instruction and planning and all those things.
Anything else that anybody notices about what you see here?
I like the fact that it does allow us to have the six years of the same cohort group because you can really, since it's the same students fundamentally, it allows you to get a good glimpse of that group as opposed to looking at one or two years.
He, is, is this what we should be looking at? Why this? Why, why NIWA assessments in terms of assessing our, our performance? Is that what we should be looking at? Does that dovetail with competency-based?
You're asking me that separately from this, I take it. Or is that what you're wondering?
I don't know.
That's what you're wondering, okay.
Yeah.
Does, and, and I like how you brought in that competency base. Does this? See, even teachers have to sound things out at times. Okay, I think that's enough for that one. So we're gonna move on to the next piece of data. This also is data that you looked at last time. What I did for this purpose was to try to arrange it a little differently so that it was easier to see. So you saw this and what I did was I took out two of the cohorts that we had that were small cohorts and gave us the full cohorts. So you could also see the ELA and the math and on one screen. So please take a look at that one. So the first one is, as you know, is the NWEA. This is the state assessment.
Again, you noticed that like grade five and six, twenty fifteen, sixteen? No, all right, forget that.
The NIWA assessment, Amy, does that, the timing of it can depend on whether we're looking at the year's prior learning expectations? So for instance, if we take it the spring of sixth grade, we're looking at how much they learned in fifth grade and so on? Is that, is this the day of one, two, or three times? So this particular one, is that important to point out?
This one?
Yeah.
This one, you're right, is at the end of the year. And I chose, on the NWEA, I chose the winter benchmark because the winter benchmark for those years was taken by third through eighth.
Right.
There's a variance in when the junior high and the elementary school take the test in that the elementary school takes it awesome in the spring and the junior high does not. So that was the one-time allotment that everybody took it. So I chose winter for that, to have consistency. This test is taken in the spring.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else you notice on this one? Or it could be something similar. I don't mean that you have to pick out something totally different.
Again, I, looking overall at the math scores, if we're looking at the percentage at level three or above, it's drastically less averaging than it is in the, in the English Language Arts, if I'm reading this correctly. For sort of, sort of.
I'm just, wanna explain to the audience if I could, because what we looked at on the NWEA was one cohort all the way through. On the state assessment, we didn't have the length of time that allowed us to do that. So what you're looking at here are individual cohorts. These are separate cohorts. So this is all the same kids, same kids, same kids. You guys could probably figure out where you are. Same kids, same kids, same kids.
And so I guess, I guess again, the data's not linear, it, it fluctuates. It fluctuates.
Just gonna tap your screen. Oh!
Oh, I also went on. Let's go back. Okay.
Amy, the NIWA platform versus the state or the S-PAC platform, the S-PAC one changed in, right? So, kids haven't had as many opportunities to see SAS in the same format as they've seen NIWA? Or is that, is that an important point out or not?
Oh, I think that anything like that's important. Yeah, this has, yeah.
Fifteen, sixteen was the first year, I've mentioned earlier, sixteen, seventeen.
Sixteen, seventeen. So, I think, um, if, if you're looking at that, um, so we're talking about, these last two are the new state assessment.
Correct, AAR. And the first two were S-PAC.
Yes, correct. Thank you. This is the, um, new, uh, PSAT that we have not had our kids take before called the MSSQT. And, um, what this particular PSAT does is it, um, also gives us a way of gauging, um, the ability of students to, how they might do on a, an AP test. So, it gears them towards that if they choose to. Um, this is part of that new SAT suite of assessments I mentioned to you last time I was here. That will give us, um, some really nice data. So, what I did with this data, it's the same data you saw before. I just made this bigger so we could see it and moved this to the side because for purposes of what we're doing now, I felt that this was probably the most important thing for you to see. Again, overall scores. Uh, no cohorts, because this is the first time we've had our kids take this particular assessment.
So, the highest score you can get is fifteen, twenty? On this test?
Yes, the two scores combined.
So, we're saying that out of our seventy-eight students, seventy-nine percent got the score of a perfect score?
No, no, let me, let me explain that a little bit. It's confusing, and thank you for bringing that up. Met both benchmarks. So, the benchmarks for the, uh, English reading and writing is four hundred thirty, and for math is four hundred eighty. So, it's how many of our students, the percentage of students that met the benchmark.
And that benchmark is set by the college board based on data that looks at, um, success in basically your first year of college. Um, success defined as passing classes and meeting college requirements.
We're just not getting math. Right? Like, that's just so low to me, that fifty-nine percent.
That's been pretty consistent with, um, what we've seen through the years as, and it's not just, um, Newmarket. It's part of, it's, the state average is not far from that. Um, but yes, clearly there's a discrepancy between literacy and math.
And again, this, uh, a few pieces that are great to share, I think, one is that we're using it as a predictor in tenth grade. So, there is some, some time before that first year of college. This one predicts college, potential college performance in the first year. This year will be the first year that, uh, students prior to tenth grade will have a chance to see the PSAT multiple times before sitting for this test. So, we're hoping, again, that doesn't close that, what you're asking, Elizabeth, but it does give opportunities to see the format, work through some of those pieces.
And, uh, really, the skill set that students are expected to have for the most part is a really strong algebra foundation. So, it really underscores our need to focus on those, those foundational mathematics skills.
This, these are SAT results from last year. This, this one I showed you as well.
So, these would now be juniors, or these are now sophomores?
These are seniors.
These are seniors.
These are seniors. Two thousand seventeen, no, this year's seniors.
They would've graduated.
If they took this in eleventh grade.
They...
Right.
So, this year's seniors.
Yep, yes.
So, these are the ones that are applying for colleges, applying for careers.
Comments to add from that one?
We see, was state average in both?
Yes.
Were you getting that out?
Yes, and, and that, I didn't have that on the other slides, um, just for your benefit, Chris, is because we discussed that prior to that. We looked at some of the area schools and such. And, um, I didn't change that slide, so, but yes, and we did discuss that. Thank you.
And I don't mention that because I think fifty-three percent or seventy percent is a number that we should, you know, hang our hat on, but it's worth mentioning.
Absolutely.
And the other side of that coin is, and the state poverty average is double our local, um, so, you know, yes, we're doing better than the state, what we would expect to be.
But we should be.
And how can we continue to grow?
Okay. Now, we get to the fun part. Doesn't that look like one of our schools with a shovel in front of it?
I had to take a second look.
Okay. So, the next step, uh, when we're looking at data after we've, we've just made some observations, um, of what we've seen, is to take the next step to dig a little deeper. And this, again, you saw last time. And based on, this is, do I have it? Hold on one second, let me just try to see. So, based on what we talked about last time, and that it's come up again about math, where our students not attaining the same level in math as in ELA. I just went ahead and, so that we wouldn't be going through all of the state all night long, um, to choose the math to take a look at. Felt that seemed like the logical thing to do. So, now I'm going to ask you, as we're looking at the, uh, NWEA, um, data, specifically the math, what do you see here that might take us a little further?
The majority of the students are in the average or the low average categories. And all the, if I'm doing my math right. Yeah. It's close in the real and complex number systems, but... Oh, wait a minute.
Average and low average, is that what?
No, that's not right. I'm looking at this again because if I look at, like, operations, algebraic thinking, the majority of the students are actually in high, average, and high. So, I've misspoke.
Okay, so in algebraic, I'm sorry, if you look at it.
In...
Operations and algebraic.
Operations and algebraic, or if I'm reading this right. No, co, the real and complex number systems. If I'm reading this right, we have fifty-six percent of the students who are in average, high, average, or high. Where twenty, thirty-seven, is this there?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, thank you. I was missing that one. Did I miss the high? And I guess my question from that is if we have, you know, fifty-six, forty-six, you know, up, up, upwards of forty percent of this, this class in the high, average, and the high at sixth grade, what happens to when they get to the SAT or things like that? Are our numbers being sustained from that point, from sixth grade to eleventh grade or to the SAT, to the tenth grade? And if so, why is that happening? And if not, why is that happening? Or is, is the group expanding, decreasing? What's happening to those, those high, the, the higher and the lower ends? What's happening to, to, to maintaining or, or growing these scores from sixth grade on?
Anything else? So, I think that is a great question for us to look into. And if I may, I'm going to go to a different spot, just, um, based on getting to, um, another level before we go to the higher grade levels. And one of the things that I noticed and that we talked about, um, when I worked with this grade level on data, is that geometry, not geometry, yes, geometry is, um, actually the lowest of the areas of math in this particular instance. So, um, that was something that we thought we should look at. So, in NWEA, and I've shown you this before, we have what's called the learning continuum. And what the learning continuum does for us is that it, we can show every single standard of math in whatever grade level we choose, and it will align students with the standards where they're ready to learn. So, it gives us the levels of students. So, I put in, and, and I usually suggest that, um, anyone using this data, do this. Put in a couple of grade levels below, a couple of grade levels above. Because we know that we have students that are performing below and, and students that are performing above. So, I did that with, um, geometry. And it actually showed this, this is one of the large groups of kids that were there. They all have the same name. Black line. Anyway, so if you look at this part of the data, you'll see that most of these, these standards up at the top are fourth grade standards, and these are fifth grade standards. So, what that's telling us is that these students in these particular standards, if we're talking about competency-based, they are not solid on the standards for sixth grade.
So, the students that are on, on the right column have, have not met those standards yet? Or have met them and are ready to go on to the next thing?
They, they're ready to learn these standards.
Ah, okay.
That's the way NWEA explains it.
So, they're ready to get, to attack those goals?
So, when we're talking about driving our instruction by using data, this is how we can do that.
Okay.
And research, well, as I say, research says it goes back to Baygatsky and his own approximate development, but you wanna target learning for students right where their needs are. And so, that's what this provides for you.
Okay. And if, you know, if I am a teacher, and again, I am not, we all know that, but if I'm looking at this data and I see one of my students, you know, we have a group up in the fourth grade, but I have one that is in the fifth grade or in the sixth grade, then I would think I would have to sort of modify my teaching instruction to meet that student, or one that's in the third grade, you know, with or, with or without supports, to meet those students on those ends where they are, as best I could.
Well, and, um, another, and absolutely, and to try to prevent maybe such a, a large discrepancy is all the way along the way, looking at our instruction. Is our instruction covering the standards? Um, and if we're using formative and summative assessments along the way, making sure that the students do have them. Will every single student have every single standard? Not likely. However, we can minimize those, the numbers of students that don't have all of the standards and don't feel solid on them by making sure that we're looking at that.
Again, as you think about student ownership and connecting this back to competency-based, right? It's empowering students to understand the skills that they need to further develop. So, if I, look, I can get this report from myself as a student within each of those mathematics domains and know, boy, I really need to practice my geometry skills because I'm missing a whole lot there, but I've got my computation, arithmetic computation skills down solidly.
And I think one of the things that I've heard, you know, when we talk about competency-based education and that concept, the fact that the teachers have to think about students at a variety of levels. That's already going on today.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we have the tools through the data to quantitatively determine where the students are, um, which I think will lead us directly into competency-based education.
And I, I'd like to link, you know, we were talking about, um, during the competency-based, um, conversation, that how kids really get ownership when they're, you know, able to look at themselves and see how they're doing and think about how they're doing. When our students take the NWEA, one of the best practices we use is, if they've taken it before, there's a goal-setting sheet right on, on WVA, and it shows them their past scores, um, gives them the different, I brought this up, because it actually shows how they did on the different goal areas. And so that they know which things that they need to strengthen. And, um, what the teachers will do is have them set their own goals. And it really is, um, you know, great to build their confidence and, and increase their effort on the assessment because it makes it more personal for them. It's not just a number that teachers are using, it's their skills.
It's also where a combination of, uh, good instructional practice, but also use of technological tools, um, can support individual students in growing those skills where they may be in a different place than their peers to continue to move forward.
Um, so I wanted to show you, um, some of the new reporting on the college board and why we, um, it just really enhanced our decision to go back to all SAT products, all the college board products, rather than mixing in the ACT. Um, they, the part of the suite of assessments is they've developed some very helpful tools. So, this, this is a site that anyone who's had a child who has, um, prepared for college has probably gone on this site, and it's, um, available to parents, it's available, available to students, it's available to educators. So, it's, it's not a mystery product, it's something that can be used as a tool by anybody. So, just to give you an idea of some of the things that are available on this site. Here's what we want to make sure we're doing, improving instruction. That's why we're going through this data, to support the kids by improving our instruction. I can't do this now. Okay. So we're going to look at instructional planning, and this is the assessment that we're looking at. So again, what this does is it takes those, you know, we looked at three, four numbers. This is going to break down those scores into much smaller chunks. I need to do this again. So that's the overall reading and math. Then it breaks down the reading, writing, and language into separate parts, different components. There's the math. And then it does have analysis, it has these things for us to show science and social studies, which is also very important. These are incredibly important skills that we really have never had broken down before to show us what are some of the areas where we're excelling and, and maybe not excelling as much.
Can you read those categories, Amy?
Yes. This is command of evidence, words in context, expression of ideas. Standard English Conventions, heart of algebra. Problem-solving and data analysis, these are, these are extremely important skills, as we know, for no matter what we're doing after leaving high school. Passport to advanced math. And there's much more detail. In fact, I'm going to show you really quickly Khan Academy, which is now linked to SAT, which also can be, you, anybody can go on, as you probably know.
I go on it every day.
Okay.
It's a great resource.
Nice one, it's incredible.
Okay, I'm going to go for teachers, but you can see learners, teachers, parents, all of the different categories.
Do you guys use any of this? Have you, are you all sophomores, or where, where are you all?
We're all juniors.
My god.
You're all juniors.
That's crazy. So have you utilized any of this to kind of see where you're going and?
We're using, for math right now, we're using Pearson, we're doing Pearson, which is math itself for school. Um, which our, our teacher just assigns us, that's usually where our homework is. It can range from, we had six, two nights ago, six problems to do, to fifteen or twenty. Uh, and we do some online assessments.
Yeah, and we didn't give the PSAT to our sophomores last year, that's new this year, so they will be taking, you'll all be taking the SAT in April. But Khan Academy is something they all can use now. You can take a practice test, go in, see how you did, and then they're going to give you targeted practice.
Well, that's what I was wondering if anybody's tried doing that yet, just to kind of see where you are.
That's going to happen very soon, and I have a very important question for you. Because you should have taken home, I believe Mr. York brought around some letters about being able to earn, earn scholarships?
Yeah.
This is part of it.
And you can, yeah, I mean, the first thing that earns you is just creating a Khan Academy account and linking that to your SAT practice. But again, I think as we embed this for students that are in your grades, the opportunity to really practice and improve those scores is going to continue to grow. But I think the College Board's research, research has shown that as little as like eight to twelve hours of practice through Khan can significantly improve your SAT score when you take it for real in April.
And totally, there's about ten or twelve of our current seniors who've taken their SATs for the first time, who, who spoke to me about enrolling in Khan after their first try at the SAT and, and sort of took it on on their own. So I know at, at least the senior level, some of the kids have sort of taken on on their own with some teacher direction. But it was typically happening after the first bite at SAT.
Right, and so the great news about taking it in April of your junior year, right, if your score is not where you want it to be, you can use that practice tool, improve your score, retake over the summer, or in the early fall of your senior year, so that those better scores than are the scores that you're sending at the colleges that you're applying to.
I spent five hundred dollars on a class that I had to stay after school two hours a day for my SATs. It didn't help. This would have been much better.
So one other thing I'd like to add about this, this SAT suite of assessment program is that there is a chart that shows the benchmarks of all of the assessments from the, the eighth and ninth grade, PSAT, to the, this tenth grade, to the SAT. And so that you can, it, it shows a continuum, so you can see, you know, based on what you scored on that first assessment, you know, where you need to be to be more successful in the next assessment, so.
I, I misspoke, because I said eight hours to twelve hours, but it's actually the combination of that, which is twenty hours of practice on Khan Academy is associated with an average hundred and fifteen point score increase from PSAT to SAT, so significant.
You guys can get those hours in before April.
So, this is, I, I told you that I wanted to take you through the experience of, of digging through the data. We didn't specifically answer these questions, what I really hope to do is show you that we have the tools. Once the teachers review the data and, and we discuss the data, we, we do this kind of exercise. What do you see? We would make a prediction of what it is, and then dig through the data and, and see where it is. We don't really have the time here to focus in on one area to kind of pull everything out, but we do have the tools to look more specifically at the areas of math, because this is, this was the area that we thought could use some improvement. We can look at specific students to help those kiddos that need a boost, so that they can be more successful. And we certainly have some new tools to also help us boost those kids before they leave us next year.
Now, this was very helpful to, to sort of walk through the process and determine how you, even more deeply, how you delve into the data, and then really look at what it's telling you, and how that, the tools that we have to learn from that and then shape instruction.
And for privacy reasons, obviously, we couldn't take you quite as deeply as our teachers would go, but
Nope, we're good.
But it gives you a, a flavor.
Yeah. Any questions for Amy?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Amy, for coming back.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
All right, moving back to our agenda for the special business meeting. We, and January third, NASDAQ came to talk about superintendent search. We were working on the announcement and the, the successful candidate profile. Mike, I know you've updated the successful candidate profile. Elizabeth, have you had a chance to review that all?
Yes.
Okay. Does it look, it looked great to me, thank you, Mike, for doing that. So why don't we proceed with, I'll send that to Art and Carolyn tomorrow to get that started. My question is, did anyone take a look at all at the announcement?
Or the sample, what do you, what announcement?
The, this.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Do you have any feelings about that that I can share with them? To, you know, obviously I had a question about, we need to add the facilities piece, I thought.
Yeah.
And highlight that, and I'm not sure if we want to modify this ranking thing since it's a while ago. But I think that, other than that, it looked like a document that we could use successfully again.
I'm with Mike, keep the ranking on there. I, I mean, it's somebody's
You want to keep the ranking?
Somebody's going to come. We, we achieved something.
Okay.
Like, we have done a lot in the last ten years, we just haven't been able to keep a superintendent. So what I'd like to do is
Keep it?
Keep the positives, right?
I will keep it and add a piece about facilities, and then we'll take it from there.
I, I would say, to be fair and accurate, I, I might supplant recently with the actual year.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Okay. Is that two thousand nine?
I have no idea.
Two thousand fourteen, wasn't it?
Chris, do you know what year we got the ninth in the U S News and World Report?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Okay. Which is sort of recently. All right, so I'll deal with that tomorrow. I was thinking about the search committee, and sort of, this is the tentative thoughts that I had for the makeup of that committee. Two school board members, two parents, one from each school, two staff members, and I want to note that the Teachers Association sent me an email requesting that a teacher be on it from the high school and a student, and that's reflected in my list. Two administrative team members, one special educator, one special ed parent, one community member, one high school student, and then possibly one paraprofessional food services custodial member.
How many is that?
Twelve.
Twelve.
That's a lot.
Twelve. Is there anything you guys would want to remove from that? I, I think that's about what we had the last time.
Well, you have two parents, so in those two parents, three parents, you could combine those two parents, though, right?
Maybe.
You could take those two parents and, and make them, I mean, we have parents that have multiple kids in multiple buildings and with multiple needs, so.
I would say of the people that we've heard from who want to volunteer, the largest group has been parents.
Yeah.
So you, do you want to take it down to one regular ed parent and one special ed parent?
I, I say we see who applied and see if we, we can meet all needs with two parents.
Okay.
Let's see what we have.
Two parents.
I, I think that would, I mean, if, and if the community has something to say against, they can, you know, obviously write us.
That, that sounds fine, it's just, it's, it is the upper end, but that's
I think, I think that's what we had the last time, pretty close to it. In fact, it might be
Art mentioned something about
Exactly what we had.
Sweet spot of like nine to twelve. It's fine, fine with me.
Okay. So we'll see.
Let's see.
And Meredith, Elizabeth, you would be Elizabeth, did you, have you looked at this at all? We just got it, right?
No, I've had this, but what I was looking for
Was the document?
Was the document, and then I, the calendar, and of course I forgot the calendar. This is, there really isn't a lot to change on this. I wanted to put the dates in, that's
It, it will, it will, remember Al, Art, I'm sorry.
Art, yeah. He's, he said he'll, he'd fix it up, so.
Well, but, but he also said that, you know, it's, when, when we, you know, Kim, you gave us certain groups, you know, now who do we send it to to get those?
I would say for the administrative team, we would talk to Meredith, obviously, for her team. I think for the teachers, you know, there's, one teacher has already reached, expressed interest in it, so that would be something we would want to consider. But in a situation where we don't have someone, like from the elementary school, I would suggest we reach out to Sean Pine to get that. I would say we put another solicitation out through Blackboard or whatever to see if there's more potential community involvement, the, the Newmarket newsletter that comes out, the town newsletter, I think it could go in there for the community member. So I'll, I'll take a look at that and get that all taken care of.
Yeah, just sort of thinking of, just out of fairness too, when we submit these, although we do have some folks who've already expressed interest that, that wasn't a general advertisement for it.
Right.
Do you know what I mean?
Right. I think there would be now. But I have all the people that have reached out to this point.
We can do what we did last time, too, social media. There are things that we, as, as board members can do.
Yeah. And we just want to make sure we get a good cross-section of the town.
Right.
One of the things that I want to say, just for, for Elizabeth, for your, I don't think you heard this earlier, there seems to be some sort of communication issue email-wise between us and NASDAQ, because Carolyn was trying to send me something, they tried to send Mike something, so I'm going to talk with Jason about that, so that sort of has been a hiccup, but we'll get that taken care of. So
And that's something, like, not your job, you know, like that, you can give that to Meredith, this, remember, you're not getting
No, no, I mean, it just, it just, it ju, just something that came up today, and I was going to, and I, I just
Well, it makes sense, because we haven't been able to get anything.
There's been a whole, there's been some, and the weirdest thing was Carolyn tried to send me something, and it wouldn't go through, and then Art forwarded and it went through. So who knows? And I know Mike was having problems, so just, just as an FYI.
So just at the bottom of that sample, that sort of, the invitation letter, it, it asked for a contact person, and it has in here sort of a placeholder of school board chair.
Yeah.
I mean, I would think, you know, we'll have to see what goes on in the SAU office in terms of administrative assistance, because this, that person could
Yeah, we have a general mailbox that's already in place, that's being monitored every day, multiple times a day to, so you have an address that you can have those things sent to, or if you would like that.
Or I can do it.
I don't think you're going to get Indian dated.
I mean, I've already received six.
Right.
So, I'll just put my cellphone in.
And, yeah, we'll just have it put in that mailbox. It comes through snail mail, just put it in the mailbox, and it can be, it can arrive here.
Okay.
What's the date that we want to put on there that we need to hear from everybody?
I would say, I would say we need to first widen the net in terms of solicitation. So that would be the first step, and I know, obviously, we can't get in tomorrow's town newsletter, because that's happening tomorrow. So I would say next week would be the solicitation week. Which is, which we have
Well, it's, it's Thursday, right?
Yes.
I would act it up on that, on the schedule camp, just in thinking of that, and I thought, I thought February seventh might be a, a, you know, like, sort of a deadline.
That's fine by me.
With that schedule, we're
Mm-hmm. And in, on this, on the schedule, screening committee advertised recruit and select members February seventh is the deadline. So, we'll do it.
For your parents.
We'll do it, and we'll get some people on.
So then basically, I don't know which teacher applied, but so we should ask each administrator to pick somebody from their building?
Yeah.
So then we should ask
Meredith, what do you think?
Well, you can certainly do it that way. I think you want to just put out a notice to all employees, in the same way that you're doing it to the whole community, to invite participation. I think you want to be as inclusive as possible in the process, and just like you're putting together a committee, you, yeah, you would get that same input from teachers and administrators and
I will draft a general solicitation for all, and let you guys see it, and then we can get it out.
Great.
Anything else about that?
I think that those are the only things that they need.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll be in touch with them tomorrow, I said, and I'll update them, and we'll take it from there. Anything else about that?
I think that's all they were looking for.
Yeah, no, I think we're, we're good for right now.
So basically, we're going to tell them, go with this letter as is?
Yes. Just, and I'll, I'll judge up if
Not this one, my other one, where's my?
No, I probably stole it.
Oh. Is that mine?
No, this is mine.
No, I probably have some that's here.
But I did just have it a second ago.
Anyway, so that's, we'll go with that letter, with the date?
Yes, we'll go with that letter, we'll go with a modification of this one, February seventh is the deadline, I'm the contact person. I will draft something for general solicitation for all involved, we'll take it from there. Just a couple reminders before we adjourn, move into non-public session. The budget committee, there's a meeting next Wednesday, the twenty-third, at seven thirty, to review the Warren article for the CBA. And then, this is for the town members, the deliberative session, the budget deliberative session is February second at nine AM in the auditorium downstairs, so put that on your calendar. And our next regular school board meeting is February seventh at seven PM in the town hall chambers. Anything else before we move into non-public?
You want to do the total of all manifests?
No, we'll do that next time. We'll do the second, we're good for now. I seek a motion to go into non-public I seek a motion to go into non-public session under RSA 91A-32B.
So, moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. McKenney with a second from Mr. Kennison, I guess there are two here, to go into non-public session, we'll go do a roll call vote. Mr. Kennison?
Aye.
Ms. McKenney?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton, we're in non-public session at 8:31.
Hi, Jen, thanks.
Thanks, Jen.